Six thirty, I'm going to call the Joshua City Council Coram, one oh one South Main, Joshua, Texas, and since an open meeting, such as the open meeting roster in the state of Texas. Anybody that's zooming into the meeting, if you'd like to ask a question, there's a spot on your screen where you can notify the city secretary and state what your question is. We do have a quorum present, and at this time, I'm going to ask Mike Kidd, Louis Sinner, pledge, followed by the invitation from Master Dale Wilbon.
Let me lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every gene and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, let me lead this to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You're up.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, first, let's say thank you on behalf of all of us gathered here today for your blessings in our life. Thank you for the ability to be involved in the work and honor of bearing responsibility for the city of Joshua. In the scriptures, you said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, this evening, I pray for our mayor, for all the city officials here, and in particular, for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement, personal space and peace in their lives. And I pray for the agenda set for them today. Please give an assurance, what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our city of Joshua. We pray this in Jesus' name.
All right, first items to discuss questions, plate, the budget report and financials, six, part twenty-two. Everybody has any questions on the financial report?
This one is info of one hundred and six thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars.
There is. Do you wish we had more of them?
Yes, sir, I do.
That is part of the program with Enterprise. They purchased some of the vehicles that were newer to put them into the system. So that was the money going, coming to that. And then what we're doing is basically passing that through, reinvesting it back to that to keep the payments lower for the next twelve months. So that's what their income is from.
Also looking at the ESD incentives, I know our fire department has really stepped up their game this last fiscal year, and they're doing great. Are we still on track to continue those incentives?
Yes, sir. They also, the ESD increased funding for fire departments to help because of increases in fuel costs. So I believe fifteen percent, and we started seeing that money this month. And so they set it up so that, to help cover the fuel increase in fuel expenses, and then as well, just other expenses that volunteers may have towards their reimbursements and incentives to increase them coming in.
Do we have any update on the status of getting our new fire truck?
The new one?
The new one.
They, they made the trip down last month to go over the final design stuff, select colors, things like that. That's been done. They'll make a second trip down as it gets fixed. It is still on schedule and it's in production, but we're still probably eight or ten months away from seeing it.
A lot of those. Any word from the ESD if they're going to help cover part of this cost?
For this truck?
This truck.
I'm not aware of any, they haven't put out their final list of what these, the sales tax money that's, they're starting to see come in. I will tell you that I visited with the executive director a couple of weeks ago, and they are seeing significantly higher payments than what were projected. And so their plan, the initial plan was to not allocate any of those funds for the first year, just in case there was overpayments that needed to go back. And they just didn't have a good history of what they were going to get. Now that they're seeing that, I think they're kind of backing off of that, and they're going to be doing, distributing some of those funds this year. They just haven't, they meet on the same night we do. So I think that's where the chief is tonight. There may be something coming out of that, but they're letting the area fire chiefs, so far, the recommendations that they are making, they're, they seem to be okay with. So I think, I think we're going to see a pretty good increase in funds coming from them and equipment. They're going to start buying equipment to provide also. That's part of what they're doing. So I think it'll be a win for everybody.
I do have one question. So I'm noticing here, I've noticed it before, but I actually haven't thought about it in time to bring it up. It shows here that the fire department has a training and travel fund of fourteen thousand. Fire marshal's office, which we just opened, has a training and travel budget of two thousand. But I don't notice any training or travel fund for our, are we using it from a different area?
They have, they have training.
Look, page eighteen here, the financial report is where that's located. I stand for it. I knew that, by the way. So, I mean.
I remember things they asked for.
Awesome. All right. The cleatran expense and budget is sixty-six hundred dollars, but I assume we have to disperse any of that.
Cleatran waived the fees the last two years, actually, for the pandemic. We got a letter from them last week. Those will be reinstated upcoming year. So that, that money, it'll just go back to the general fund at the end of the year. So we won't see that. I believe, I believe it's staying, the rate is staying the same right now. I wouldn't be surprised to see that change a little bit because of fuel costs, but that's why.
Have you seen, seen any increase in ridership on that?
I haven't seen any numbers lately from those. They have added the, a second, they still pick up downtown and the parking ride, but I'm not seeing any fluctuations that are, in most of it's coming from downtown. There's not a whole lot of over that or parking down in the parking ride just yet.
All right, next item is to discuss, we see a traffic impact update from nine seventy-two hundred pass.
A follow-up that Scott asked for, just to kind of look into and to keep track of traffic increases and kind of watching as the bypass stuff develops. We had the latest numbers that we just collected, currently just showing just under two percent increase from two thousand and fifteen. And most of that is traffic going westbound. And then the traffic counts on Caddo, which are, well, this shows fifty-eight percent, but if you go back and look at when the initial one was taken, that was during the summer. The second count was actually during the school year. So that, I think that's what you're seeing there, which just kind of reinforces why we are fixing to reconstruct that roadway and overlay it, but we're going to wait until the summer so that we don't affect, there's a lot of school traffic goes down Caddo.
On this sheet here, you said that the opening scheduled for April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, notice to proceed scheduled for May two thousand and twenty-three. Is that typo? This supposed to be two thousand and twenty-two? Notice to proceed?
Yes. Y'all are going to award that contract tonight. Is that on this memo?
Yes, sir.
It just says opening is scheduled for April twenty-first.
I just can't find good help anymore. Don't mistake the sound right tonight. I'm good, right?
Are we going to be riding cattle here?
Little bit, not much. Just a little bit.
Any other questions on the traffic service?
You're welcome.
Well, you may have any questions regarding regular sessions.
Mayor, can I make one quick comment? As y'all have learned of me by now, when I get a chance to pat staff on the back to y'all, I do. This, this morning, the police department put out a notice of runaways to small children, I think aged ten to twelve years old. This afternoon, they found them, safe and happy and healthy, and they're through the process, but they are safe. The league chief of health floor, was it both you guys went out there? So they, they were able to locate them and figured out who one of them were looking for. And so they're getting the help that they need. And, but I'm sure most of y'all saw that notice, wanted to make sure that y'all knew that they had been found and they were safe. So.
Good job. All right, next is public forum. Do we have anybody that can speak in the public forum?
No, sir.
Next is proclamations, a review for proclamations for the day of prayer. Whereas throughout the history of America, faith in Almighty God is deeply rooted in the foundation and building up of this great nation. From the early pilgrims to the continental Congress, to the many presidents and governors who have served, we have exalted the Lord, giving him praise and overflowing gratitude throughout the generations as he carries us through times of great crisis and celebration. And whereas in our city and across America, the observance of National Day of Prayer will be held on Thursday, May of fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, with the theme, Exalt the Lord who has established us, based on the verses in Colossians two, six dash seven. Therefore, as you will see, Christ Jesus the Lord, so walk in him, having been firmly rooted and now being built up in him and established in your faith, just as you were instructed, and overflowing and credited. And whereas a national day of prayer has been a part of our heritage since it was declared by the first time in the Congress in seventeen seventy-five, and a public law established in the United States Congress in nineteen fifty-two, approved by a joint resolution and later amended by Congress and President Reagan with a public law one hundred dash three oh seven in nineteen eighty-eight, affirming that it is essential for us as a nation to pray and direct the President of the United States to set aside and proclaim the first Thursday of May annually as a national day of prayer. And whereas leaders and citizens of our nation are afforded the privilege of prayer, affirming our spiritual legacy of instituted times of thankfulness and renewed glance on the Almighty God, we ought to exercise these freedoms we have to gather and to pray, to unify our hearts, communities, and our country while we hold dear to our freedoms and to one another as fellow Americans, all fearfully and wonderfully created in the image of God. May we take time to pray for our nation and our neighbor. Now therefore, I, Joe Holler, Mayor of the City of Joshua, hereby proclaim, May fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, as day of prayer throughout the city of Joshua, and I commend this observance to all of our citizens. Oh, we had a couple of other proclamations in the package. Hopefully, we got a school board together. Next item is consent agenda, which is the approval of minutes. You can see council meetings held on February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, and March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Mayor, I'll look to approve of one change, the minutes for the May, March seventeenth minute for a regular meeting on a special meeting.
I made that correction earlier today, so if you had the wrong copy, I apologize. But the ones in a packet actually has regular.
All right, now motion, now a second. Second by Angela Nichols, to approve the consent agenda, which is the city council meeting minutes from February twenty-first to March seventeenth. Do you may have any discussion? All those in favor? Motion, period, seven zero. When the regular agenda was going to open up, the public hearing at six forty-five. Eric?
Mayor, council, the vacant property has never been planted and will be required to do so. This property is owned, the agricultural district, proposed development of this property is to allow for the property to be divided in the entire construction of the home. This development will be required to submit engineer building plans and will also be required to final plan the city has agreed for building plans and submitted after approval of the final plan and before a building permit is issued. The proposed request confides with the future land use plan and staff regulations approved. The planning and zoning board has been recommended for approval on April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you. Do you have any comments to the older? Everybody in favor or against?
We got five in favor and one against.
All right, we're going to close the public hearing at six forty-six. And next, we'll discuss, considering the possible action for approving an ordinance for zoning change regarding the approximately one point one zero six acre tract of land in the Christopher Cheney survey, CR two two C, abstract number one seventy-five, county of Guns, Texas, located two thirty-five Trailwood, change from agricultural district to R one, single family residential, as to allow the construction of a home. Any questions? Entertainer motion.
I'll second.
Their motion by Robert Fleming, seconded by Black Kid, to approve the ordinance. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Period, seven zero. Our next item is to discuss, considering the possible action on awarding a bid for East Fourth Street and Caddo Road Improvement Project.
This is a bid that was sent out, this is part of the bond funds that were passed last year. We received the tabulation this year for you. We received, it's like six responses. The low bid was a J Mills contracting, one million one hundred forty-five thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars and some change. This company is known to Freezer Nichols. They're also known, Public Works Director Chris and Hubicek also has worked with these people in the past before. And so they both had a recommendation that the contract be awarded to J Mills in the amount of one point one four five mil.
Yeah, question, what, where is this at in relationship to the budget that we had come on? Are we in good shape or?
Yes, we had, they actually came in lower than what was expected. We were expecting closer to one seven, one eight. So we're pretty happy with it.
And we've already did all the engineering, so this should be final.
That's correct. There's a few lingering bills from engineering that had to do with the tabulation and things, but the engineering plans are complete. Everything's ready to go, and the plan is to start the week school ends.
Very good, then. We're actually came a little bit under budget, considering when we pass the public.
Yeah, well, and it, yeah, because it gives us a little more room for main street too. So that, the waterline project, I think, goes to bid in May. And so hopefully by then, we'll be able to start looking at, once we get that out of the way, we'll start looking at what we can do downtown.
This is for both Caddo and Fourth Street.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's Fourth Street.
East, yeah, the post office.
Anybody else have any questions? Enter, take a motion.
Motion's approved.
A motion by Rick Prince, taken on the line to approve the awarding of the bid for the East Fourth Street Caddo Road Improvement Project for J Mills Contract Inc., a bid of one million one hundred forty-five thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion, period, seven zero. Next item is to discuss, considering the possible action of ratifying the purchase of two thousand and twenty-two International HB six oh seven dump truck for public works and authorizing the mayor to execute all the necessary documents. Eric, where is she?
Center.
Do you want to take this one?
Yeah, sure. This really has been done. We secured the financing for the truck. It's not going to be here for several months, but we, we had to get the financing arranged to get it in line for production. And so that has been done. And this is, the paperwork was initially signed by staff, and because of the amount, it needed to come back. The lending company wanted to come back and go through the council. So that's why you're seeing. Other than that, nothing, the numbers haven't changed.
Is this vehicle part of that enterprise?
No, they don't fund the heavy, heavy equipment. They don't fund. It's just mainly passenger vehicles, trucks.
Anybody else have any questions?
This, this was already voted in, the C I P.
That's correct. Yes.
And two thousand and twenty-two, just for the, is it the mark or, or the year?
I'm sorry?
That's purchase of two thousand and twenty-two International HB. Is it like a brand new?
Yeah, it's, it's a new chassis, and then they'll build the, the dump bed to go. It's a dump truck. It'll be the bed to go onto it. That's what'll take the time, but it gets us in line. And they're, they're about, I think, a year out is what they were telling us.
Decalled up and everything, they did the whole thing, saying.
We'll, no, we'll put, we'll put the decals, and it'll come with the chevrons on the back, but we'll put the city logos on it when it comes in. Pardon me?
I said, down all the lights.
No, it should come with the lights too, the, the warning lights it should have. Well, we, we might put a light bar on it for you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Hey, Mike, get home that warning of the bid on the road. Is there any bonding on that that were assured from last or next month?
Yeah, they, they posted a security, a security bond. Yes, we had that.
Right, any other questions on the dump truck? Same motion?
I'm making a motion.
Motion by Mike Kidd, seconded by Angela Nichols, to approve the purchase of two thousand and twenty-two International HB six oh seven dump truck for public works and authorizing the mayor to execute all the necessary documents. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion, period, seven zero. Next, discuss, considering the possible action or point zoning board of adjustments. I'll go ahead and take this one. We've got a couple of openings. Fortunately, Mr. Doug Taylor, he's on that board, passing away last month, and we've got another opening, and we have a very important meeting coming up on May sixth that has to do with the house that's over on Fourteenth Street that was on the fire. So we need to get some more business. We don't have enough for a quorum. So I actually reached out and talked to Jerry Moore and Glenn Walden, and they both agreed to serve temporarily, at least through this meeting. So we'll have somebody that's got knowledge of sort of how the system works. Can't just take somebody that had been on the board, hadn't been to these, because that's a suit, a semi judicial board. So you, there's a lot of things that you've got to take into consideration when you're doing that. And I think both those individuals have worked. If somebody else has got somebody that's bad, we need to appoint them to that. And so like I said, Glenn and Jerry are both volunteer.
Do we have alternates?
Well, we have.
We have, there's two positions, but they're, they're not filled.
So we didn't have any alternates that wanted us to step up and be members? Make sure we weren't jumping over somebody who wasn't.
Yeah, this would be the first time this board's met in a while.
Well, I said, this is a very important meeting. We've had to postpone this thing, move it around, and getting a lot of heat from a lot of the citizens. So I want to make sure we're able to do this.
I move that we, Glenn Walden, Jerry Moore, at least temporarily to the L B A.
Do you have a second? Look at Angela now.
That temporary is for a while.
Yeah. I have a motion. Scott Campbell, seconded by Angela Nichols, to point Jerry Moore and Glenn Walden to the zoning board of adjustments. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion, period, seven zero. Yeah, till we vote them off. That's the only board then. They got more power than we do. Next, the staff reports. And I noticed in front of you is the police report that you might get into some of the packets that's there. Do you may have any questions?
On the response times, if he could go on there, the, what's previous month's time, so we can kind of track how they're, they're moving. I mean, if I'm remembering right, they keep getting better and better. And there's going to be fluctuations, but I'd like to see.
That shouldn't be a problem.
The court, city court before, is that what the new judge?
Yes, sir.
How's that working out?
Very good. I spoke with Paula yesterday about it, and she, she believes she's working out very well. She makes frequent appearances throughout the week to keep the signature load down, and they're, she's very happy with her.
Anybody else have any questions on the staff report?
Is there a witness on the police report, drawn, over a client, there's a big difference like March last year and March this year?
That's due to the number of stops. Most of our projects. We have a new police chief since last year to this year.
I wouldn't dare say it. It does have a lot to do with, I, I agree with the mayor that it is.
It starts at the top. Yeah, all right. Somebody tell me this Broadway on the, I guess, the city of Joshua saying property lease, fifteen twenty-five seven, is that that yellow house? Oh, man, yeah, eighteen thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars.
No, sir, that's the property that used to be a mobile home park that we had to clean out, tear down, and. We, this woman went to court on. Well, he got, he got it up for sale, but.
All right, I just wondered, I saw that eighteen thousand dollar. I was looking, is that your house?
I think so.
Their dog park.
Any other questions on the staff report? Anybody have any future agenda items to request?
I'd like to get an idea on the status of how we're working, getting a better broadband service into the city.
You want it now?
Sure.
The, the state has asked that, a lot of people that were looking at using ARPA funding for that stuff, the new infrastructure bill has a pretty heavy amount of funding in it for that. And right now, they're asking that, that we hold off on using any federal funds until the state gets their assessment done of the need. We've, we've turned in the items that, from our city, that they asked for. And we, we've been participating in the, the meetings, the Zoom meetings. Once they put a plan together, that money will go to the state. We would then apply. then apply through the state to give it would go through the council of governments. I believe that's the way it's going to be set up. So right now, though, we're just, we could still do it. We're not obligated to wait. But most of the people that we talk to, that's kind of the companies, that's what they're telling us, is they're waiting on this infrastructure bill to make any commitment.
So we're looking at the next.
Other than pathway.
We're looking at the next legislative session, and no guarantee that they're going to do anything.
No, the legislature, the way this is set up, this can be dispersed as soon as it's received, kind of like the ARPA funding was. But they have to turn, the state has to create their plan and submit it, and then they'll receive the funds.
So it's a committee that's working outside of the normal legislative process?
That's correct. Yeah, they're doing hearings and stuff currently in Austin.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I'd like an update on our new municipal judge appointment with the next meeting that's possible.
Sure. Is there something specific you're looking for?
Just a gloss over, how is it working out? Kind of update.
I just gave that. Did you not hear?
Did he?
Yeah, I spoke with Carla, the court clerk, yesterday. As they. I'm sure you have. They're very happy with the way it's working. She's in her third month, I guess. And, yeah, they're very happy with the way it's working out.
Crazy question. The Joshua Station, I mentioned something about Barking earlier. Whatever, I remember we had a discussion a year or so ago about the train stop potentially happening here. Has there been anything with the rural commission, any kind of train? Do you have any talks on that?
There's still some conversations in the Regional Transportation Council about it through Cog. The last thing that I saw was there still has not been a funding mechanism for, to bring that down. Now, I was told that Burleson has got a stop coming.
I don't know what the exact thing is. That's sort of the key. Once it comes to Burleson, it's not going to be that much for it to get into here in Cleveland.
Yeah, and one of the things, things that I had thought about was the train stop and helping ease traffic. Because a lot of commuters would possibly use a train to commute, as well as they go lower with a freeman, we'll have a nice toll road, we'll have the railroad line, and hopefully the new tunnel system by then to ease some traffic. But I just, I wrote that down earlier, and I just wanted to ask and see if there's any other things I have that you could give us.
I can reach out and get one. I mean, I know that the Transportation Council meets regularly through the council of governments, and I can reach out and find out, you know, what the status of that stuff is. Sure. You want that for next?
Next, unless you just want to send it out in an MO. In between. And it's kind of a back burner thing. This is not something that's going to happen this year.
Okay.
I want to say, Alex, when movies end apart, wonderful.
You're welcome.
Molly asked me to mention something to you guys. She wanted to remind everybody, we are participating in the Wounded Warrior Bike Ride. They're going to be coming through, bicycling from San Antonio to Arlington. They're going to be here on April the thirtieth, on a Saturday at ten thirty. And we're going to set up two sites for, you know, people to come out and cheer and moan. And one will be here at City Hall, and then the second will be at the fire station. And they'll stop briefly at the fire station for water restroom breaks, and then they will probably ten, fifteen minutes, and they'll be continuing their journey through Crowley and then headed over to Arlington. So we were asked to, you know, basically just gather up some cheerleaders for them to, you know, thank them. And these are all ex-military personnel that were injured in the line of duty. And it's kind of a, it's pretty big events. First year to come to Joshua. Molly had a relationship with the lady that coordinates it. She handled the coordination when she was in Keene, and they wanted to continue that relationship with her. So we didn't have a lot of time to plan for it this year, so the stop will be brief. Next year, we're going to work to put on a kind of a big dog and pony show for them.
That's April thirtieth?
April the thirtieth. That's a Saturday morning.
And we just placed some flyers just outside here.
Would it be possible for possibly the city to purchase some little flags or something passed out?
We have. There are flags to pass out. We've also bought a rather large one that we're going to hang up at the fire station. I believe is what they're going to do with it. And then there'll be, we'll have some flags out in the park and along their route. I believe the police department's going to work to bring them through the city and take them out towards through Burleson and to Crowley. So, yeah, and we've got gift bags. She went out and got a bunch of stuff donated from some local businesses, coffee, and we've got little gift bags to give to all of them that when they stop, they'll get those. And we got together what we could, and I don't know what all's in them. They may be some of those who know.
What time did you say?
Ten thirty. That's when they're expected to be coming through here.
And she suggested we start gathering about ten fifteen.
Right. Yeah, we don't have an exact time. They're having breakfast in Keene and then leaving from there. So however long it takes, they're estimating thirty minutes or so to bicycle from, they'll come down thirty, forty-eight. One seventy-four.
Alex, can you just, if you don't mind, send that in email reminder?
Absolutely. And tomorrow, we'll be setting up a Facebook event page on it with that also.
Have you updated on Facebook? Have you updated the post about the lost children?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes. Yes, immediately.
Are they, the Wounded Warrior Project, are they raising money or donations possibly to the city?
They haven't asked for any. I don't know. Molly's kind of been railroading that. And like I say, it was really short notice, and so we're not doing a whole lot. Next year, we plan to do a lot more.
You guys have a problem if we offered a donation? Nope. I mean, I mean, just let mommy know if there's any, anything we can do to help them.
Okay.
They really do a lot of good work.
I sure will.
CPA will be able to direct the prep for your PBA.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, so real quick, I heard that in a couple days or so.
They must be working you hard, man.
Hey, I just wanted.
All right. And we're going to go into a technical session pursuant to the vengeance of Captain five five one, Captain eight, Texas Government Code, discussing the following: consultation with the city and county relative legal issues associated with car wreck and all matters. Let's play it carefully.
Last bit, someone we had. Sent a message. Alice, and you ordered it. It's in fact, what I understand, they sent out electronic signal. Is that right? Test them. The thing is, the audio portions, they'll get tested. So some of the sirens did not go off. Now, I understand about the code red comes out on our phones. Some people don't have them, believe it or not. If you got, if it's in the afternoon or late evening, and people are out working in the yards, when I'm out doing yard work, I don't have my phone. All of a sudden, tornado hits ground. How many people would not hurt if kids were out there on the football field, stuff, practicing lane, and that siren did not go off? And it just happened all at once. When that tornado hit four hours, a few years ago down there, I was actually in Cashmere, and that's all of us. We just left, and it hit real quick. If something like that happens, how many people are going to get hurt? Because they didn't knock their sirens. They didn't have a phone.
That's the problem with some of this. You don't even have enough time to hear the sirens.
Well, you're.
I know Burleson checks those once a week.
Right. I think Mike got it. He's got it up. They love that, Mike.
Yeah, we, Chief and I have been working through a lot of this stuff. We've had American Communications out to troubleshoot. What we found was that, we actually learned some things. Even though those sirens are sitting on top of power poles, and they all have power to them, the power is only there to charge the batteries. There are two twelve-volt batteries in each of those cabinets, and that's what powers the sirens. It's not the power from the meter. It takes nineteen volts to activate those sirens out of a twenty-four-volt battery system. So they have to be up in current. The maintenance agreement, for whatever reason, going back to when Chief Baker was here, was not renewed. And so the batteries basically have not been getting checked regularly. And because the, we replaced the computer in the emergency operations center that operates the sirens, that sirens system, although it's still viable, it's, the software is fairly old. And so all of the functions were not working with the new updated computer. Actually, the day before this storm, one of the silent tests was initiated, and four of those sirens came back faulty. But because the software wasn't talking to the computer, there was no printout. Nobody saw it. It wasn't being recorded anywhere until American Communications pulled it out. That has been fixed with new software. So that's been done. They went out and physically inspected the sirens and the batteries. One of them had an amp problem that got in there and cooked the battery charger, and so it wasn't working. The other one of them, although the box had been opened and tampered with, everything was intact. The second one, the third one over on Cooper, had vines and stuff that had grown up in there that we got United Co-op to go out. They sent a bucket truck out, and we drove vines off that thing to fill up the back pickup, and it had knocked the antenna loose. And so the antenna wasn't connected, and so that one didn't fire. That has been fixed. So what I've told the chief to do, and y'all will actually get a report next month with a recommendation, two of the sirens are in, are not able to be repaired. They're, we initially put three up years ago. Although they're working now, they can't, there's no parts for them. So if anything goes bad, they're gone. So you're going to get next month a proposal to replace those. And we're also going to move two of them. We've got some overlap in areas, and we've got some dead spots in Mountain Valley, some dead spots in Joshua Meadows. So we're going to make a couple of adjustments to cover those. And then we've already started the new maintenance agreement. We've started, I've told the chief that I want batteries replaced annually. The batteries don't cost near enough to not have them go off again. So they'll be set up on an annual rotation. All of the chargers are going to be replaced. Somebody cut the copper ground wire out of one, it cut about four feet out of it. So that one wasn't working. That charger wasn't working either. So we're going to replace those, and then we're going to encase those copper wires to make them a little harder to steal. And so.
It goes off to the.
We're going to, council of governments recommends, what they have set up is they ask all departments and cities to do a vocal test, an outdoor test on the first Monday, Monday or Wednesday.
Wednesday.
First Wednesday of every month at one o'clock. And so I've told the chief that he can, I don't care if he does a hundred silent tests a month, but every, that first Wednesday every month, we will blow the silence. We're also, we're making some other changes, too, with our code red system. There is an updated system out there that we're looking at that will, they will automatically set off the sirens anytime that there is a tornado warning within any box inside the city. So we don't have to do anything. The ESD and that's to do anything. That system will do it. As it sends out, as soon as the National Weather Service triggers the alert, it'll automatically go out, and it'll automatically activate the sirens. So that's something that we're looking at. We're still getting, he's still getting information on that, trying to get costs on it. So we're going to, we hope to have it all ready for you guys to look at. It is going to require some additional funding that's not in there to do, but it's something that we have the funds to do, and it's probably something that we should do. But I've asked him to try to have it all cleaned up and prepared for presentation deal in May.
Can some of that funding come from the?
I don't, I don't know. Maybe. I'm going to ask that question.
If I can, it might be, might be a good time to update, revamp the whole.
Yeah, I mean, because you're talking about thirty-five thousand dollars a piece for these things. They are not cheap.
Silent test, okay. It's like turn your key on, watch your gauges come up. You turn it off. It's going to start when you need it.
Yeah, that's right. All that test does is shows that that unit received the signal. It doesn't guarantee that that siren's going to go off. And so we're, I've told Tom, we've also adjusted the times for those, because even the silent test now, when it's set to go off, the stuff comes in, I think, at seven thirty. There's nobody in that office at seven thirty to see it. So we've changed that to where the silent test will go at nine thirty, and then it'll automatically email Joey and Tom the results of the test. But even despite that, and actually, American Communications has told us we shouldn't do that weekly, because it just, it causes problems in the receiver when it continually gets hit. So we're probably going to reduce those. We'll figure out something. We'll take a look at their recommendations. We're also going to look at what Burleson and Cleaver do to try to stay in, to stay kind of in the same areas where they are.
We could even consider, you might talk to the chief about that, you can even consider in the times of year that it is more apt to happen, or spring times and our fall times, to maybe go to a once a week test, an audible test, a four word once a week. And it's an actual one o'clock on Wednesdays, once a week. It goes off, and it's only a few seconds. It's not a.
Yeah, it's not a big deal to do. And the reason, they used to, they used to do that. They blast them all the time. And I think they're just so tired of getting inundated with the phone calls. So what I've told him to do is, we're also going to roll out an educational program that we can send out, make people aware of when it's going off, what it's for. Because that thing can send out one blast, two blasts, three blasts, or continual. Ours is continually three minutes for a tornado. We need to get that information out so they know when they all rotate.
Yeah, you said, you mentioned zones that were dead spots, or, and then you mentioned a second ago about the boxes. So is that the same thing as the zones? So those zones would be what the?
No, the zones, no, if one goes off, they will all go off. The city's not large enough that we would separate. So if it comes through, and it covers just a portion of us, of any of the boxes that we establish, they will all go off. But we've got some overlap. There's one on one seventy-four right in front of American Steel Carports. But then there's another one less, you know, three blocks away. And so we've got some dead spot in Mount Valley. We're going to take one of that one on one seventy-four, move it up. They recommend a three-thousand-foot radius, and so we'll move it out so that we'll get that coverage. There's also another one down by Indian Hills, where there's, and we're going to move that one back a little bit so that it'll get eight oh five and Joshua, the new phase in Joshua Meadows. There's also another one down by Indian Hills uh where there's, and we're going to move that one back a little bit so that it'll get um eight oh five and Joshua, the new phase in Joshua Meadows. And we may even add one uh because Scott Sandler told me today, he's getting ready to file for the last phase of Joshua Meadows. They're working on that now and we might need to plant one out there. And so we're, we're going to take a look at that with them too.
I also want to mention for anybody who doesn't know, Alice did a tremendous job on getting the code red stuff fixed. Okay? For some reason, information didn't get to them and, and Alice can explain what all that was. All I know is one tornado hit, I didn't get a code red. She says, the next tornado warning, I got the calls, so.
Yeah, if you're not getting them, then give us a call and we'll, we'll get in there and fix it.
Yeah, and unfortunately, the code red has not been updated with our G I S system of most of the addresses. So I reached out to Johnson County, got it updated on all the addresses, got it submitted and they got it updated immediately. And then um one thing we had, our system had it already, we just didn't have it activated at no cost. Is where you can text to um subscribe to um, to code red. And so we got that activated and we've had many sign up for it already by that. It's, yeah, it took off big time within a cup, yeah, social media. Yeah, well, yeah, we, I just did one electronically. I haven't done one past couple of months. I've had computer issues now for five, six months. Normally I do it every quarter. Normally every quarter it goes bail out. Uh, this last quarter it did not, only because I can't produce it just yet. Um, but I did do one um electronically. And so it went out. I don't know if you subscribe to that or not, but if not, I can email you a copy of it. But if not, it's on our website, you can still see it. Yeah, okay. Yes, but one will go out hopefully next month. There you go.
Oh, hopefully y'all are going to get some options on this uh next month too. Cause I've also told him that I want him to evaluate other systems with code red. To, if we're going to start making changes, I want, I want the best with all the whistles and bells while we're changing. So he's looking at that too.
One last request for maybe next agenda uh. An update on uh. Boards and vacancies and it's, I'm sure it's coming at a time with the election and everything. We'll have to make another push of all board members to nominate or to help come up with some people to get on these boards.
Yes, we usually start that around June, July, because we make the appointments and they go effect, yes. Yes.